Good evening and welcome to the Westmont Village Official Voting Board Meeting for July 6, 2010. If I ask our village clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Perez.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Finance Director Von Baga.
Here.
Village Planner Malik.
Here.
Director of the Fire Prevention Bureau Daniels.
Here.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item before us this evening are the minutes of the committee. The whole meeting held June 17th and board meeting held June 21st, 2010. Do we have any motion?
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emory.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Present.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
She said yes.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Reports. First thing I'd like to mention is the very successful 4th of July celebration at Ty Warner Park. The fireworks were just as good, if not better than we've ever had for those of you that were in attendance. And we have to thank for that success the Village of Westmont, the Westmont Park District, and now the Westmont Auto Group, which I mentioned last Thursday was formed to not only promote car dealer sales in the Village of Westmont, but also to help us fund various functions in the village throughout the year. A good time was had by all. A few people got drenched a little bit, but I don't think it dampened their spirits at all. So it was another lovely affair. And once again, Ty Warner Park is just an absolutely wonderful place to have an activity like that. The police department does a great job in controlling traffic. By mistake, I pulled into a handicapped parking spot and there were about six people that told me almost immediately, "Bill, where did you park? You can't park there." The sign was right there, but I never saw it, but I moved the car right away. Are there any other comments that any other board members would like to mention regarding the fourth?
It was fantastic, as always. It was great.
Thank you. And next, I would like to call our fire chief Frank Trout up to the podium. He has some information regarding the taste that he would like to share with us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Stan?
With me tonight is Fritz Hayden. And he's a student at Western Illinois University. He's been working with our EMA program. And during the time that he was with us this summer, he also joined our emergency management agency. He has a major in law enforcement along with a major in emergency management. When he came to me a couple of months ago and we sat down and talked about it, I learned that he was a resident of Liberty Park, went through the Westmont school system. Trustee Forsley reacquainted himself with Fritz earlier. And anyway, it's good to see a young man come back and give back to the community. Fritz came in with great information that he has learned at Western. And one of the programs which he was trained for was Storm Ready. And that program he's going to put on tonight for you in order to safeguard our citizens during our fests and just a great asset to the village. Fritz?
They'll turn it on.
They'll turn it on.
The booth and they'll focus it.
Okay.
Automatically.
As Chief Trout introduced, I'm Fritz Hayden. Tonight, I just want to give a brief introduction on the Storm Ready project I've been working on and also a few other things, a few summer severe weather safety tips and also a few basic preparedness activities that residents could participate in. First up, I had tornado safety. This is probably the biggest threat that would pose a risk to Westmont. Some basic things to know for is first thing is to watch out for the National Weather Service warnings. That's pretty much the first thing that everybody should do. You could do that through watching the Internet, watching television. Almost every cable channel will scroll it on the lower part of the screen. And also, if you have a NOAA weather radio, warnings will go off on that. And I'll also speak about that in a couple of minutes. It's important to note, however, sometimes a tornado can develop before the National Weather Service can issue a warning and even sometimes before Westmont or local towns could activate their siren systems. So it's important for residents to be ready for a tornado during severe weather such as severe thunderstorms. And if you hear a warning or siren or you think a tornado is present, it's extremely important to get into shelter immediately. And that would be the lowest floor possible, such as a basement or the first floor. And also in the most interior rooms such as a closet or a bathroom that has no windows. Second point I wanted to make was severe thunderstorms. With severe thunderstorms, there's a few hazards within it such as lightning, large hail, straight line winds, which are also called downbursts, and also flash flooding. A few quick facts about each. Lightning can strike up to 10 miles away from the nearest rain. So just because a severe thunderstorm has passed or it's approaching doesn't mean anybody's safe outside. Also, hail can grow up to three inches in diameter or larger and fall at speeds up to 100 miles per hour or faster. So if you're out in the open and you get hit, say, in the head, that would be equivalent to being hit in the head by a major league pitch, which isn't good for anybody. So, and then the third point is straight line winds. These can cause just as much damage as a strong tornado, which would be an EF2 or an EF3. And they can occur without warning and you can't predict them. So it's just as important to be in your basement or in shelter during a severe thunderstorm because if your home did get hit by a straight line wind, your home would receive just as much damage as if a strong tornado hit it. And then lastly, flash floods can occur. And as it says here, as little as two feet could sweep your vehicle away. So there's a saying that the National Weather Service likes to say is, "Don't drown, turn around." And also, the best thing to do is to get indoors in a fully enclosed building. The last hazard I just wanted to briefly touch upon is severe heat. During a severe heat wave, it can be made more dangerous if there was a power outage or if your home did not have air conditioning or for elderly also. So the best thing to do is just to stay cool, stay indoors. And if you don't have air conditioning or power, it'd be best to go to a relative's or friend's house who does have those. Or in worst case scenario, go to a public place like the library and read a few books during the day just to stay cool. And some other brief points would be, don't overexert yourself and still stay well hydrated. And this will prevent heat exhaustion and heat stroke, which could be dangerous health conditions that can cause serious injury or death. And also, if you know of somebody who may need help, just check on them every once in a while because during the time that no one's looking after them, something bad can happen. Secondly, you could be prepared. And that includes making a plan, which is just basic things like, well, where are we going to go in our home if a tornado hits? Or if a tornado does hit, where can we go? Who can we call? Stuff like that. Also, there is making a 72-hour preparedness kit. These have important items such as food, water, a first aid kit, flashlight batteries and stuff like that. So if your home was damaged during a severe thunderstorm, you could have it all in one place right there and it would help you in the response to after the emergency. And lastly, there's also being informed, and this is with the NOAA weather radio. These devices are just as important as a smoke detector because they automatically go off and alert you once the National Weather Service sends out a warning. And this is especially true if you're sleeping or you're not watching television because you wouldn't have any other way to receive that. And so those are just some basic preparedness tips. And this slide I have here is for more information. There's a lot more information that I prepared for the residents of Westmont. And you can find that at the village website. The easiest way to get to it would be looking at the press releases on the right hand of the page where it says, "Westmont EMA Getting Westmont Storm Ready Certified." And that'll link you to the page of severe weather safety tips. And there's just tons more information and a lot of it you may not know. Some of it I didn't even know when I was preparing the information. And it's very helpful with all types of severe weather, including winter weather and stuff like that. And then if you want more information on preparedness kits or disaster plans, you can go to ready.gov. FEMA has built a very comprehensive website on those topics. And then lastly, for more information on NOAA weather radios, you can visit weather.gov/NWR and they'll tell you what types you want to look for when buying it and just how they work, basic operations of how they work. And then lastly, I just want to touch upon the Storm Ready project that the EMA has been working on this summer. It's a certification through the National Weather Service. And with meeting their standards that they have set out, it would ensure that Westmont as a community is thoroughly prepared against severe weather. And important note is, that's not going to make Westmont stormproof. So it's not like a tornado will be approaching and it disappears. But with meeting those standards, it will help save the lives of our residents if Westmont was severely impacted by severe weather. And that's all I have for tonight. Are there any questions?
No, a lot of good information. Thank you for putting it together.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Fritz.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all. That's all that I have right now. Next, our village clerk.
Just a quick reminder that Taste of Westmont starts Thursday with the carnival. I think half price fries are something very reasonable for the kids. And Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, all that wonderful food will be out there. So everybody come out and eat lots because all our restaurants are great and there's great food. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our village attorney this evening, Anne Marie Perez.
I don't have any reports tonight.
Ryan Searle, village manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Nothing. I thought you were saying, "I think."
No. Well, I think.
New business. Mays Lake Village liquor fee waiver. It should read as follows. Board to consider approval of an ordinance of a request from Mays Lake Village to waive the $100 per day temporary liquor license fee for the 3rd Annual Millie T-Tech Memorial at Mays Lake Village following the 16th Annual Mays Lake Village Development Office golf outing.
So moved, Emory.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
218 North Cass Marco Tanbor Hair Salon. Board to consider a motion approving the floor plan and proposed signage for Marco Tanbor Hair Salon.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Discussion.
Just with the caveat that even though we're approving the floor plan, that it still has to pass all the other requirements from Fred's office.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Next item, 233 West 63rd Street, T-Mobile. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emory.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Sprinkler ordinance revision. Board to consider an ordinance amending the automatic sprinkler system requirements of the International Building Code for remodeling projects in the B1, should be B1 business district.
Mayor, I did have an option two that I sent out.
Okay. Can we get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Okay. On the question, please.
I sent around an option two. Last week, I understand if you look at, in section one, if you look under D, there's a section that says, "Any building over 2,500 square feet that has a change in use." That's the standard language at this time. And I think the board last week determined that they would like to add additional language to identify or define what change in use really meant. And according to the discussion, the words "to a more hazardous use" as determined by the Westmont Fire Department was to be added. So we suggested that potentially you could vote on this option two. That's the only difference from option one. Alternatively, I understand that Fred Kimball has indicated that he would like to have people look at this to try to determine what change in use truly means and potentially come up with another definition, if you would. So you have the option to either vote on option one and then place the item back on the agenda again for the next set of meetings so that we could bring more information to you about change in use. Or you could vote on option two, which has this more hazardous use definition.
Mr. Mayor, we also, I told Anne Marie before the meeting, there was also discussion on paragraph B, "Any restaurant or assembly occupancies over 50 persons." The confusion over whether that meant any restaurant whatsoever. So paragraph B needs to be tweaked, too.
I think the idea was to remove restaurant.
Yep. That it was just going to be any assembly occupancy over 50 persons.
And there was no requirement then for restaurant at all mentioned in here?
No, because we didn't want it to cover the small bistros and that type of thing.
Okay. I also have a couple of comments with regard to the actual sunset clause in the timeframe. I think it would be more realistic, and I know we had a lot of discussion about this on Thursday night. When I really think about it and what it takes to sell a building, to do work in a building and to get it ready to rent or just get it ready even for anything, I do think 18 months is a little tight. I can see a situation where someone might sell a building, a new owner might go in there and start renovating it, and that may take several months. And now, three months later, guess what? They have to put in a fire sprinkler. I don't think that's a realistic timeframe. I'd like to see us go back to the 36 months to again be consistent with the, you know, with the heat, smoke systems that are going to be required to go in. I think that would be a lot more realistic. Also, concern was raised, and I very much agree with it, on buildings over 2,500 square feet. I do think we have to kind of be cognizant and think about the other buildings outside of the B1. And I really think H is far too restrictive. Just my two cents. I'd like to see us go in and kind of tweak that a little bit, perhaps. I don't know. What does everybody think?
I understand what you're saying on there, but the other thing that was brought up in one of our emails, which I thought was very important, is do we have some way of keeping track where this person mentioned that all these little small remodeling projects could end up turning into one big project in the time span? And how are we going to control? Is there anything in here that would say? You know, I mean, every year, they could be doing these small things to avoid and at the end of the term, end up with one major renovation. So I think we need to, you know, take that into consideration also. But I understand the 18 months and I wouldn't mind pushing it off a little bit further. I just don't know if I feel comfortable with the 36 because I still think we need to see. And I think once they pulled their permits, then they should be able to continue. I don't think it's going to end just because, you know, the 18 months there. Yeah, but I'm saying we should do it. Like if they've pulled their permits, they've already gone through the building, they pulled their permits, they know they're electrical, whatever they need to do, then they shouldn't be subject to it. They should be allowed to finish what they brought into the building department.
But I guess my point is, it's feasible that, you know, the work could be completed in 17 months. And now they've gone through all this expense of purchasing a building, renovating the inside, and a month later, they have to put a sprinkler in. I don't think that's realistic. I think the way the economy's been going and what we're seeing, that it's not getting any better anytime sooner. I really would like to see us extend that. I also, I'm kind of struggling, too, with the idea of it just being, you know, a closed case sunset clause. And I know I talked to the manager about this a little bit, and I think we can keep it as a sunset clause, but maybe make sure that it's an agenda item, you know, 120 days or, you know, 90 days at least before the ending of that to give, you know, for us to look at those things, to look at the economy, look at how real estate's moving, look at, you know, values and listen to the input of, you know, the chamber and the business owners.
But if we did do the 36 and say, "We're reviewing in 18 months," that you could still pull the carpet right out from them, saying, "Okay, it's not working out. I want to stop it." Now they expect it to at least last 36. I don't want to put any hope.
No, I'm saying 90 days before the sunset.
Well, yeah, I'm saying I'd like to keep the sunset. Whether you do the 18 or you want to push it to two years to give them a little extra more time, but then do a review long before it and let's see if it's working. We may even have to extend even beyond the 36. But I just hate to sit there and say, "No sunset, let's do 36," and then...
Well, no, I'm saying sunset at 36. I'm saying sunset at 36 and 90 days, 120 would be better, to be honest, to me. You know, bring it up as an agenda item, again, get the public input, look at the bigger picture, look at what's happening in the economy, look at what's happening in real estate. And then, you know, at that point, we've got time to make the decision. Do we really want to sunset it? Or, you know, does the economy say, "No, it doesn't make sense to sunset it?" And I know safety is, of course, the most important thing. But if people don't have the money to do it, we're going to be looking at empty buildings. I mean, people are complaining that we've got a few down there now. It's going to get worse before it's going to get better. That's just, you know, my two cents.
How long has this, how long has the current one been in effect? How long has the sprinkler requirement been in effect?
About a year.
That was voted on last year.
About a year.
One year ago.
Yeah, about a year.
And it was 5,000 square feet prior to that for, I think, five or six years.
Okay. Well, the reason that I'm asking is, I don't know because, you know, I didn't take a poll of the commercial property owners. But if it was voted on a year ago, did anybody make plans for it? You know, this is what we have to do? And are we extending 18 months or three years? And nobody's going to budget for it anyway, and we're going to be back here whatever time we pick because people don't want to spend the money for it? I agree with Sue that paragraph H has to be fixed, but that's a major fix. I don't, you know, we have to come up, if 2,500's too small, I don't believe it is because, you know, we have to look at the realities if a fire breaks out. These buildings are all in downtown next to each other. The possibility of a fire spreading to adjoining properties, and that is a reality. But if we're going to look at things like, what is it that's going to trigger it? You know, doors, windows, that type of thing. That's going to take a sit-down and pull it apart and put it back together. So the question is, do we vote on part of it? Do we table it till we can have, you know, that committee sit back down and hash that out? I'm inclined to think that we're not enforcing it right now because it's on the table, that we table it until H is rewritten.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, at the very least, till the next set of meetings. But I...
The next set of meetings is the 15th, and our deadline for the agenda is tomorrow.
Oh, so, well, we could do that.
The Economic Development Director had suggested the 29th.
20, that'd be fine. 29th would be good. That'd give us time to, as you say, kind of tear it apart and fix it. And that would give...
Yeah, because obviously...
...time to consider, you know, what I would deem a more realistic sunset timeframe.
Yeah, it's got to be practical. I mean, it's, you know, and obviously, when you've got a paragraph that big, the semantics are going to take hours to put back together. We all know that. But so that's my suggestion, is we table it till we can get at least H done. And that gives Fred a chance to work on the language for the more hazardous use. Gives Anne Marie the ability to change the sentence in B. And we can kind of think about what we want to do with the time.
I think maybe what I would, as far as the time goes, I wouldn't have a problem going to the three years. But I would like to, instead of see 120 days prior to that term ending, I'd like to see us take a look and see what's going on on a yearly basis or in 18 months, not only down here, but throughout the rest of the entire village. Get an idea.
Yeah. We should be doing that all the time, anyway. We should always be reviewing.
Right, and it should be done. And as far as H goes, we talked about that, saying that that's something that we're going to have to rework as we go along. I think the biggest part of this was dealing with the situation in the B1 district and some of the problems we had right now that we're trying to face and that we're trying to get around. Now, that being said also, I would find it very hard-pressed to find any other village going to the extreme than what we are in reversing square footage for sprinkler requirements versus leaving them the way they are. Because, I mean, I honestly, I've made some phone calls and checked with other people in other towns. There is no way that they would even consider backing off what their sprinkler considerations are. Whatever they've marked them, that's what they are.
Well, I think that's what makes us stand out. I think we're more willing to be realistic and to listen to their business owners and to jump out of the box and try to help them.
I'm not arguing that point. But what I'm saying is, I think tonight, the biggest thing they're looking for is the one area.
I can tell you, I'm willing to cave on the 18 months and say, "Okay, let's pull it out to 36 months." And I agree with you, Trustee Fleming, that we should be looking at it annually. But I'm going to throw out into the mix that since this is to assist the building owners in moving their properties, whether they be for sale or for rent, I am going to, at some point, ask the village manager to put on the agenda that hand in hand with this, it's going to have to be some direction from the board. We're going to have to face it about what we do with the vacant properties that are aesthetically horrible.
Right.
So, you know, we'll do what the business owners want us to do and what's right and extend it out and, you know, be very careful about what triggers sprinklers. But that doesn't mean that you can have a building that looks like a dump.
Right. They need to maintain a reasonable order of appearance of their property.
No, I definitely agree. I think H, though, needs immediate help. I don't think it's something we can pass and continue to work on because when it's passed, it is what it is and we have to live with it. You know, we don't want to be in a position of changing at every set of meetings because we thought of something. So I think we really need to go in and that desperately needs work. You know, and that refers to buildings over 2,500. So that impacts, you know, not really the downtown as much as our other business owners that are feeling the same pinch, you know, that our downtown people are feeling.
Does anybody have any problem with D, then?
With, I'm sorry?
Does anybody have any problem with D?
Yeah, I do. I don't like it that the fact that just one department within this village has the right to determine what's hazardous.
Well, apparently...
Granted that the fire department is, you know, one for that. But I think that it needs to be, I think it needs to come under economic development based on what the product is in that. I don't...
Wouldn't they just go to the fire department and ask their opinion anyhow?
Exactly. I think cut out the middleman, fire department, they're the professionals. I have more of a comfort level with the fire department than one person.
I mean, I don't see, I mean, I don't see where ED can overrule the fire department on what's hazardous and what isn't.
No, I mean, you know...
There are the experts in it. You know, if they want to work hand in hand on it, I don't have an issue with it. But the fact that ED would have the total say-so on it would be...
That's what I'm saying. I think they need to work hand in hand.
Yeah, but I think it should stay the fire department.
Not that it's just going to be, you know, bang, that's it. They're the final say-so.
These are the guys that have to go in there. So if they're the ones that...
Yeah, and I think they should be the final say. I really do. And if somebody chooses to come for an exception to the ordinance, well, then it becomes our, you know, our issue. But, you know, that first out of the, that's the way I feel. I feel like, yeah... But, you know, that first out of the, that's the way I feel. I feel like, yeah, they should be that.
So is there any urgency for why we have to do this tonight, or put it off till...
No, I say, let's wait till the 29th.
The only reason I don't know that I'd want to wait is, and I would have to defer to the Chamber and the residents, are there any pending sales? If we put off another month, and there's a sale, are they going to, "Well, we don't know, we got to wait another month before our board decides"? I don't know where that stands.
Straw vote?
Well, I don't know. I guess I'm referring to Ren probably, because she's probably the more knowledgeable, or Larry, you know, if there's any pending sales...
I'd like people to know we're doing this, because otherwise, they may walk away from it.
Well, and I understand that, but, you know, at the end of the day, we have two choices. We can't rewrite it tonight. It just isn't going to happen. So we have no, I don't see us, we either pass it as it is, which clearly we think it needs work, or we wait.
Well, I think, too, that, I mean, it's obvious what we want to do with this, you know. We were...
The other ordinance is still in.
I understand that, but I think that if there's a prospective buyer, they can talk to Fred's office, or they can call Ron, you know, since Fred's on vacation, and pretty much get a feel from the Village as to where this is going.
Yeah.
Even prior to the vote.
Yeah.
Because we're all in agreement about what needs to be done.
They can talk, they can call us individually if they want. I mean...
Yep.
They'll know that. Yeah, I agree. I...
Okay.
Larry, did you wish to make a comment?
Thank you. Yes, I do. In terms of the timing, we're still looking at a very aggressive timeline. And from the Chamber's perspective and conversations we've had with the people are very concerned about this, I think that timing would still work just fine. So the ability to go through this again, and kind of sort out some of these, I think, is much more valuable than trying to make a decision tonight. So I think that would be our recommendation. Thank you.
And I think the thing is that we're looking at trying to, you know, find a better solution. It's not that we're tightening and going to be more restrictive, and I think that the buyers will realize we're, you know, we're looking to their end of it, so.
We want to make it work.
Yeah.
Be livable.
The only other thing I think we need to be aware of, if the three years is fine, is in three years, this could be a completely different board.
Yep.
Probably will.
So whatever we decide, we need to make sure it's clear, because we may be thinking one way, and working one way, and you may have in three years, a completely different board that just totally revamps, which may be a good thing or a bad thing. I'm not saying either way, but we need to keep that in mind. So if we wait three years, again, how is that going to change?
The intention's clear, then, when this comes up in three years, as to what we wanted to do with it.
Right.
And that still doesn't stop them from changing.
No, they can change the ordinance anytime they want.
They could go in prior to that point and say, "We want to bring it back up."
I understand. But I want to make sure that we're clear on what we're saying, so people in three years, if it's not this, you know, or if it's half this board, sitting there going, "What do they mean by that?" So.
Good idea.
Kind of like we do with some ordinance. "What do they mean by that?" Were they thinking, "They mean that, then"?
So there are changes, other than just Section H.
Yeah.
You've got questions on D, and you've got questions now on what else?
B.
H.
Got D and B, and H.
Some of them have been resolved. I think probably H and the sunset's the biggest one right now.
Okay, it's becoming obvious to all of us that we need to postpone this to the next meeting. But I just want to give staff the 29th.
29th.
29th, I'm sorry. Give staff enough time to, and enough information to make the corrections that we're stating tonight.
Since I made the motion to approve it, I'd like a motion to postpone until the 29th, July 29th.
Second, Scott.
Okay, we have a motion, a second postponement. Any other further comments? Okay, roll call on the postponement.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next, on a fiscal year 2008, 2009, comprehensive annual financial report. "Board to consider motion approving the fiscal year 2008, 2009 comprehensive financial report."
Motion approved, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item. Issuance of a 1.9 million taxable general obligation refunding bond. "Board to consider an ordinance providing for the issue of $1,900,000 in taxable general obligation refunding note, Series 2010, for the purpose of refinancing Series 2006 taxable debt certificates at a significant interest cost savings." We have a motion.
Motion to approve, Forsley.
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Present.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Next item, permanent easement agreement. "Board to consider approval of an ordinance authorizing a permanent easement agreement for right-of-way purposes affecting 409 South Warwick."
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Finance Ordinance Number Five.
We have before us on the 6th day of July 2010, a finance ordinance in the amount of $733,773.50.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emory.
Discussion. Roll call. Finance Ordinance Number Five.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Purchase orders.
Motion to approve is a block for $432,701.28.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion. Roll call. Purchase orders.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
We don't have a request before us this evening for executive session, unless there's something else to be brought up at this time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.